Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. Zach, this is, or Jack, this seems really loud, but okay. As President of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching and the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SASD. All items that will be discussed at the meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room. Also, please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic on the form you filled out, and any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, please recall that you will not be able to speak about that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SASD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SASD. We do have a quorum this evening. Dr. Mills was, is out today for family, and Mrs. Cardenas unfortunately is ill. But we do have a quorum still, and so with that, we will move forward with our agenda. And Trey Holmes, the pastor at Community Hills Christian Church, is going to help us with our invocation.
So before we pray, I want to express my gratitude for asking me to come and do this. As I was saying earlier, as a businessman and community member, I get to do a lot of things, but one of the most meaningful things is when I'm asked to pray. So let's give thanks together. Would you bow with me? Jesus, we do give you the thanks, the honor, and ultimately, everything tonight. We give that over to you. We give you the praise. And Holy Spirit, we invite you in and ask you that you give us unity of mind, unity of spirit, and also unity of purpose, as we are here to make decisions and discuss ideas that affect our most precious resource, our children and our future. And so I pray for wisdom over our board members. I pray for the audience, that we have ears to hear and eyes to see, and that we can leave knowing that your will was done. And so we pray this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Now, we are lucky, we have students, even though it's the month of June, who have been kind enough to come help us with our pledges of allegiance tonight. So we have Brandon Kajas from McGill Elementary, Lila Rodriguez from Lone Star Middle School, Sebastian Rodriguez from Glenn Middle School, and Jensen Rodriguez from Glenn Middle School. If y'all will stand up and help us with our pledges, I appreciate it.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the meaning of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Next, we're going to move forward with our recognitions, and Shannon is going to, Schwartz is going to help us with first recognition, which is our Teacher of the Year recognition.
Good evening. Had to drop that down a little shorter than Trey is. This evening, we are proud to recognize two outstanding educators who exemplify excellence in teaching, leadership, and heart. These individuals have gone above and beyond to support and inspire the students of San Angelo ISD, and we're honored to celebrate them as our Teachers of the Year. So first, we have Ms. Lynn Springer from Santa Rita Elementary School. She was named our Elementary Teacher of the Year, so if you guys want to go to the middle here. At Santa Rita Elementary School, Ms. Springer is more than a teacher. She's a light in the lives of those around her. Known for her kindness, generosity, and unwavering support, Ms. Springer cultivates a positive and inclusive culture among students and staff. Whether she's checking in on colleagues, delivering homemade meals, or sharing thoughtful notes and gifts, she embodies compassion and connection. In the classroom, her passion for teaching shines, especially in writing, where she sparks creativity and builds confidence in her students. She invests deeply in relationships, mentoring both students and fellow educators, and is often found attending her students' activities beyond the school day to show her continued support. Ms. Springer's impact extends far beyond her classroom walls, leaving a legacy of encouragement, joy, and love of learning. So please join us in congratulating our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lynn Springer. And now we have Ms. Jenny Sanders from Glenn Middle School, who was named our Secondary Teacher of the Year. At Glenn Middle School, Ms. Sanders is the definition of dedication and passion. She pours her heart into creating a classroom where students feel safe, valued, and inspired to grow. With creative lessons and collaborative challenges, Ms. Sanders keeps students actively engaged in constantly learning. Her approach is dynamic, her energy contagious, and her belief in every student is unwavering. She serves not only as a teacher, but as a mentor and role model, leading with integrity, high expectations, and a healthy dose of humor. She helps students build confidence, character, and resilience, investing time and care into their success well beyond academics. Ms. Sanders believes in education is about shaping the whole child, and it's clear, her students leave her classroom more prepared for life because of her influence. So please join us in congratulating our Secondary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jenny Sanders. And we will find out later in July if either of these two amazing educators will advance to represent our region in TASSA's Teacher, Texas Teacher of the Year program. Yes. So, yeah, Ms. Springer, if we can get a picture of Ms. Scott, that'd be great.
All right. Our next recognition is for, and thank you all both for being here, and congratulations. Our next recognition is for San Angelo Gives donors, and Shannon's going to help us with that as well.
Okay. So tonight, we'd like to take a moment to recognize the incredible generosity of our San Angelo community. Just last month, San Angelo Gives, our community's annual day of giving powered by the San Angelo Area Foundation, raised over $4 million for local nonprofits. That remarkable impact speaks volumes about the people who call San Angelo home. We're especially grateful that some of those donations directly benefit our students, including support for San Angelo Reads, our district-wide Literacy Initiative, and other important programs across our campuses. Since 2015, San Angelo Gives has generated more than $26 million for local causes, and that level of giving simply wouldn't be possible without the support of our amazing community. On behalf of San Angelo ISD, we extend our heartfelt thanks to the San Angelo Area Foundation and to all those who continue to invest in our future students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. We had no one sign up for public comment tonight, so we'll move forward with item six, and Mr. Henry's going to start that with a construction update.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. We'll go ahead and jump right on into it. The first project we have is the Lakeview Chiller replacement. All the equipment is on order currently and expected to arrive in San Angelo in mid-August. Once that's all arrived, we'll start, even before that, we'll start working on some of the other electrical and the plumbing parts to go ahead and make it to where we can replace that as quick as possible. The next one is our Altaloma Data Center. At this one, we demoed several buildings, E, F, or F, G, and H, and then we have the electrical that we're fixing, where somebody had hit an electrical panel, and then we also have the district server room. Here's a picture of the server room. You can see the picture on the left is where we were last month, and then this month, they've already installed all of the cabinets for the servers, and they're working on making the connections of the fiber. The SASD staff has tentatively planned to move all the servers over on the week of 4th of July. The next one's our Oaks Cafe Sewer Line Replacement. This one, they have completed all of the actual plumbing and made all the connections. The only thing they have left is to put the actual floor drains in. They're going to start doing the flowable fill by the end of the week and hope to get out of here several weeks ahead of schedule. And then the next one I have is just a view into what will be coming next month. We have the Crockett Edition. This is a bid that includes the cafeteria, a new cafeteria, new kitchen, six classrooms, bathrooms, and then an alternate for two additional classrooms. Did y'all have any questions over any of these projects?
Jason?
Yes?
Any idea when it will be ready? And I know it's just, I didn't realize how, one, how expensive those things are, and then, two, how long it takes to get them.
We really lucked out. Part of it was, came real early, and then we had one other one that is supposed to ship tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So as soon as it ships, they've got all the wire pulled and everything. All they really have to do is make the final connections, and then it's actually a building that doesn't affect anything moving forward on the server room. We're going to be able to get occupancy on that, even if this panel doesn't come in.
Okay. And then also on the chillers, what are we waiting on? Because that picture you had, were those the chillers that we?
Those are the rental chillers.
Oh, those are rentals. Those are the rentals.
Yes. We're waiting on the physical chillers. They're building them as we speak.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Only question I have on the chiller project, with the planned additions, will we have the capacity, will that be separate? Do we know? Maybe a Park Hill question, and I can answer that in a minute, about how that will fit into the capacity that we are, we're installing there and making sure that we're thinking forward.
I'm going to get a yield to Alan. He's the engineer. There we go.
We got a thumbs up, but we'll double check that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Park Hill, and they're going to do an update on bond projects.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the board, thank you again for having us. Excited to be here tonight. I'm going to go over some of the information that we shared last at the pre-agenda meeting that Mr. Lopez shared with you last meeting, and we did talk a little bit about some of these items as well back in the May meeting, if you might recall. For our information, we talked about construction delivery methods. We're going to talk a little bit about the packages for the projects, and then we'll talk about the teams for each package. As you guys know, the district got updated qualifications from all the design firms and then have ranked those and assigned projects, and we've got a summary of the, just what the district has recommended here as part of our single slide at the end, once we get through these. Wanted to just kind of give you an idea. We went through the, we went through the timeline of projects, and we've taken these that showed when the completion of the projects would be, and we've broken those projects up into packages, so that, and then we've got a design schedule and a construction. Oh, thank you very much. Jessica's on top of it. She's helping me here. My eyesight's not great, I think, from across the room, so. But basically, you can see, we're going to start Safety and Security and Capital Renewal right away, and that'll be in conjunction with the district. You can see that we've got the Crockett project that Mr. Henry is talking about set to bid next week and then be complete next year. And then you can see Fannin and McGill, the second phase there, coming online in 2027, and then the Lakeview additions and renovations that Dr. Kingman was asking about just a minute ago, in terms of the CTE and the Mariachi Program coming online in 2028 in the new Glen. And then you can see the Central High School, that's got some phasing and things that we need to handle in advance of that, so that'll be in 2029. And we put together a detailed schedule, I think you have seen this also, where you've got basically a color-coded schedule that gives you an idea of when the design will be happening, when the bidding phase will happen, when the construction and move-in goes. So the dark blue is the construction phase on the schedule, and the light blue is the move-in. If you see the light-colored yellow, what we're trying to do here with the schedule was arrange this so we didn't have all the bids right on top of themselves, so that we kind of spread out the bidding phase, and that should help also with the participation from the different subcontractors as they're bidding that and the construction managers and general contractors. So I know we covered this before, but you can see now the introduction of the packages. So we've broken this up to help both with the bidding and the design of those packages, and then you'll see kind of the suggested, kind of the way the timeline works with that here. But we're just going to refer to these as different packages, and we have a summary slide for each one that, so I won't go and read all of these, but you can kind of see where they follow in the schedule. We'll have another slide that goes through each package and shows the amount in just a second, but I also wanted to just talk about the delivery methods, and this is a single slide, sorry about the animation here, that shows all of the delivery methods that we're talking about. So basically, in 1999, the legislature allowed school districts to procure construction and do new construction, addition, renovation, and maintenance and operation projects through other methods besides this traditional low-bid method. So that allows the district, and since then, all the projects that we've worked on, just about every single one, have involved some element of both price and quality. So it allows you to do, to inject some other factors then into the process, for example, the experience level of the contractor, the qualifications of the subcontractors, and things like that. And so these methods take advantage of injecting price and qualifications. The first one's called Competitive Seal Proposals. This is the method that you guys have utilized for both the McGill and the Fannin projects previously for the Phase One addition and renovations. It looks very much, and just to give you an idea what the graphics are, the blue is you, that's the owner. The orange with the pencil is the designer or the engineer and architect. The two crossed hammers are the general contractor or construction manager, as the case may be, and the green is all the subcontractors. So this is really a, the flow chart gives you an idea of how the contractual relationships work and who's responsible for what. But the Competitive Seal Proposal is the closest in the way the arrangement of the different contracts as to a general contractor. And so, but it injects both, essentially, you get the drawings done, and then you bid the project, different general contractors bid the project, so I know you're familiar with that, and you have your own rubric that the district has adopted for Competitive Seal Proposals for the evaluation criteria. The second one is the Construction Manager at Risk, and the district's also utilized this back in the previous bond program for some projects. This is typically used for large projects and those that are typically, say, 25 to 30 million and above, and those that involve multiple phases. And so you can see the arrangement there. There's a solid line between the architect and the contractor, meaning that the construction manager comes on board during the design process, so they're actually part of the design team to help you recommend different phasing options, different kinds of materials. And then you can see down at the bottom, typically, this has have anywhere from five to 50 subcontractors that the general, the construction manager would manage on a typical project. There's also a method called Design-Build. This is a, this is one that more and more districts are utilizing, particularly for things like, if you think about some of your energy savings projects, where you've got a contractor and a designer that work together, and that's why the two are put together on the org chart there, because it's either a designer-led or contractor-led effort. But you can see that also can be utilized for different sizes of projects. So that's one that we've seen utilized a lot for athletics improvement projects, for example, as well. And then there's a fourth option called Job Order Contracting. And Job Order Contracting is typically used for smaller projects, typically maintenance and operations projects, and that may be a case where you have a job order contractor, they prebid a unit price book, so you know the prices going into that, and then they manage the different subcontractors. Usually, it's a smaller number of contractors, so typically, it's for smaller projects. So those are kind of the four methods in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I've got those other slide, those more detailed slides that we talked about the last time. If you have any questions, I could go through those. If y'all are in good shape, we'll keep going. So we talked about these different slides at the last meeting, and then this was kind of the roll-up. I've got this slide later on, but basically, you can see we've applied the construction delivery methods to those different projects. And as we go through, we'll talk about what's in each package, and then we'll conclude with this slide here in just a second. The first package we talked about, Safety and Security, and that was the first package your Citizens Committee recommended to you. In this case, this got a budget, as you recall, of $8 million from the bond proceeds. The recommended delivery method is through either Competitive Seal Proposals, which, again, are really good for those projects that are 25 million and less with a pretty straightforward scope of work, usually single sites or a job order contract if it's a smaller type, type project. And you can see the, based off of the feedback from the district, either San Angelo ISD for those things that they could procure directly, or KFW Architects, who's here Package two, which is the capital renewal projects, that is identified as $35 million. That was also part of the Citizens Committee recommendation during your bond process. In this case, Job Order Contract, Competitive Seal Proposal, and potentially even some Design Bill for where it makes sense. And again, the, the design responsibility for those that need to be San Angelo ISD or SKG Engineering or KFW Architects. Package three is the Crockett Elementary. We talked about a little bit earlier. That's the one that was very similar in nature to the McGill project in terms of adding a kitchen and cafeteria. That was one identified by the Citizens Committee. Competitive Seal Proposal, and that would be Park Hill with SKG Engineers. The McGill Elementary, this is the second phase, which includes those other classroom additions, the library and admin areas, and then the drop-off. That was also a project from the bond, Competitive Seal Proposal, which would be a similar method as was utilized previously on the campus, and that is identified as Park Hill with SKG Engineers, and you can see the budget there for the total project. Fannin Elementary, also Competitive Seal Proposal. This is the second phase there as well, so this includes a kitchen and cafeteria there and the library and administration addition that was master plan, and that is KFW with SKG Engineers. 4C is demolition projects. Again, this is one that I think the district has utilized before with, and has utilized Job Order Contracting successfully, and so that would be something the district could go out directly to, and there's, they already have Job Order as particular delivery method that has been utilized before. New Glen Middle School, that is 122 million. That's what we're talking, or what we had recommended in previous board meetings was a Construction Manager at Risk. That was, given the size and the phasing and the responsibility of, essentially, you're building in one place, having to tear down, keep all the utilities intact while you're having school, and then reconstruct athletic facilities in the former area. Plus, there's some additional buildings there that we can repurpose, for example, on the southeast side of the site by the track. This one's identified as Park Hill. Lakeview, again, additions and renovations. This project has the CTE, the Mariachi Program, and it also has some renovations in the inside, the locker rooms inside. Construction Manager at Risk, and that's Park Hill with SKG Engineers. And then the Central High School additions and renovations, this has the new auditorium, cafeteria, and gymnasium, and identified as Construction Manager at Risk in Park Hill with SKG. And then Athletic Improvements, this is identified as job, could be Job Order Contract or Competitive Seal Proposal. As you, there may be some opportunities there for Design Build as well. That is, I did not get that on this slide, but it is, it is on the final chart, final slide as an option, and that would be KFW Architects with SKG, or it could be San Angelo ISD through the alternative delivery methods we talked about. So that's kind of the packages, big picture. I think you guys might recall that we had, that Mr. Lopez went over those, I think, last Monday. Any questions about those before we get to the summary slide here?
Yeah. Where are we doing lights at? It says lighting for athletics.
At Lakeview.
Is it just Lakeview? Okay.
Yes, we have lights at the Lakeview, and there's also two tennis courts as well that are not lighted that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This is kind of the everything-in-one summary chart. I think you guys had this in your board packet as well last week, but the, you can see, this is just a table with all of the packages. This gives you a little more idea and breakdown of the capital renewal projects as well. And again, depending on the project, some of them may lend themselves more to Job Order Contracting or Competitive Seal Proposal based on the packaging and size of the project. And there's some discretion there for, for Dr. Brandon and Mr. Henry and Dr. Moran and Tony, how they want to get those things done. And then you can see, basically, if you read to the top, there's the projects that we listed in the packages, there's the delivery method in the second column, then there's the identified and recommended by the administration, the design firm, and then there's the amount of the project. You see that adds up to the 397 million from the, from the bond. So I would, I would offer that slide to you as kind of the overall summary. And before I immediately got started and I failed to introduce my colleagues, so if it's okay, I was going to introduce Glenn Grant and Vlad Gorbinko. They're both part of our team, will be, that are identified to work on your project, so they're excited, and just wanted you to meet them. You'll see some other folks as, as we go through, but I just wanted you to know who else was with me tonight, and really glad to have them, so. Any questions about the summary slide before I?
On the Competitive Seal Proposal, what happens if you don't get enough? I mean... I mean, I don't know, Jason, do we have a limit of how many bids we get on competitive seal proposal? If we get one, I mean?
We haven't had any examples where we've had one, you know, having been specifically stated where we can't accept that.
So, just for microphone sake, Mr. Henry, do you mind coming and saying that so that everyone in the, watching this online can hear what you said?
We haven't had an example of that in recent history where we've only received one bid. We've done a real good job of advertising all these bids. We don't have any, anything stated specifically that says we have to have multiple bids.
But, Mr. Henry, and just while you're up there before you walk away, if we had a sizable project like these are, these bond projects, and we only had one bid on a construction seal proposal, we'd probably put it back out to bid again, would we not?
We would definitely have that option.
Or at least we have the ability to do that, correct?
Yes, we don't have to ever accept any bid specifically.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolf?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
All right. Next, we have Dr. Gomez. She's going to give us an update on academic programs.
Ms. Schwartz, don't feel bad, I lowered mine significantly after Mr. Wolf. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, I left a colored sheet at your seats. I'm going to start with this in the presentation, but as I go along, thought you might want to refer to this sheet as we go through the information. So for this evening's academic update, we're going to discuss end-of-year NWEA MAP growth. The district spends a lot of time talking about our commitment to grow every child a minimum of one year when they're, when they're in our system. We also spend a lot of time talking about how MAP helps educators instructionally, where STAR, when we get that data, the student's already gone. So MAP is really our driver instructionally. As you can see on your sheet, the NWEA MAP growth assessment uses a color-coded score representation. This helps educators, students, and families, and each color corresponds to a performance level based on national norms. We want to stress the fact that it is a nationally-normed assessment, and this provides a visual snapshot of where a student stands. Now, it's important that we kind of go over these color bands because sometimes just by our other experiences, we associate a color to mean something. So, what these color bands do is they help educators make data-informed instructional goals and set targeted interventions that promote student growth. So as you will see, we're going to go right to left, which also is not typically how we read, so I want to point that out. Green and blue are bands that we're looking at for students who are exceeding their performance and they have high growth, okay? Notice, high growth, we're not talking in terms of achievement, so I really want to stress that. The students in the green and blue group, they are growing faster than one year of growth from other students, okay? Then you have your yellow band. This group is maintaining performance and growth. So remember, we want to, we just never want to go backwards. We want to keep growing for every student wherever they come in. These students are on pace for one year of growth if they're in the yellow group. And then you have the red and orange bands. This group is underperforming and has low growth. So I want to point out achievement again. You can be a high achiever but low growth, and that's our commitment as educators. So think about gifted students, think about honor students. Are we pushing every single student to grow regardless of where they are? This also can be students that are striving and they have both low performance and low growth. And then we have to look and see, are there other factors prohibiting these students from moving forward? Sometimes these students need additional services and programs through special programs. Not always. I just really want to point out this is growth, not achievement. I know I sound like a broken record, but typically in education, you hear media report on outcomes, and that's the achievement. We're committed to growing every child. Any questions so far?
Can you let the audience, I don't know if you did say it, but the difference between, say like a STAR test and a MAP?
Yes, sir, I did. So this is a national-normed assessment versus the state assessment for STAR. Thank you, Mr. Gagos. So our next slide here, we're going to begin with Algebra I. So as we look at Algebra I, this year we've had multiple discussions about our need to make adjustments specifically in Algebra I. Due to that, we even began an early pilot this year with a 24-25 school year with high instructional quality resources. So you heard us talk a lot about a new curriculum, new training for teachers as we went through. Now, I know that Ms. Duncan knows this very, very well, but when we look from the lens instructionally, eighth-grade students that are taking Algebra I, they're high performers, high achievers. Not every student is going to take Algebra I as an eighth grader, and that's totally okay. But we always want to focus in on those grade nine students because they're not necessarily high performers in the area of math. So, the first set of data is 24-25, the second set of data is 23-24. You can see in that blue band and the green band that those high performers in eighth grade are pretty steady. It was our ninth-grade students that we were hyper-focused on. And so when we talked growth all year to you, you can see in 24-25, 69% of our ninth-grade students maintained or exceeded growth versus 53% in 23-24. Additionally, what's not included on here, from our two high schools, because I'm talking the ninth-grade data specifically, we had five out of nine teachers in that content area that were brand-new teachers. So when I said we knew we had to make some very significant adjustments, there were a number of variables in the need for those adjustments. Trying to just give you all a minute. We can ask questions at the end, or I can kind of pause. Dr. Kingman, did you have one now?
Just for the high-quality instruction material we used in Algebra I, what was that?
For this year, it was Carnegie because it was prior to SBOE's timeline. So the board adopted Blue Bonnet, which the publisher is Carnegie as well. The difference is Carnegie was the national version, the adoption that we took was the Texas.
The Carnegie Texas version.
Carnegie Texas version, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, very welcome. Okay, I'll move to the next slide. We'll stay on the discussion of math. Now, the difference in this slide, we also had multiple conversations this year about the teacher incentive allotment, and the district first began our data collection this year in sixth through eighth math and reading, English I, English II, and Algebra I. So a required component of teacher incentive allotment is a growth measure, and our district elected to use MAP. So specifically, that means beginning-of-year MAP as compared to end-of-year MAP, and if a student is meeting or exceeding their growth measure. So it's single years because prior to this year, end-of-year testing was not a requirement. So we can't compare apples to apples, but we do want you to see each grade level and the growth from fall to spring. So I didn't do bullet points of every one of these, but if we just go down, you can see third grade, 67% are falling in that blue, green, or yellow, fourth grade, 57%, fifth grade, 52%, sixth grade, 43%. Simply going to pause to provide further explanation because we've had a lot of conversation about transitions and the difference in student expectations from elementary to middle school, and the number of new student expectations that teachers begin to teach in sixth grade, so I just want to point that out. Seventh grade, 49%, eighth grade, 54%. And we've already discussed the Algebra I.
And I'd like to make a comment if I can. This represents the first complete data set for MAP testing with a beginning, middle-of-year, and end-of-year test so far. So this really, in my opinion, this is a benchmark. This is where we start. We now have a full year of data, whereas in past years, not all campuses gave all three, and we didn't really have good data to work with. The other part of this that I think is important for the board to remember, and will be important for teachers, is the teacher incentive allotment program. Teachers receive a designation based on student academic growth. So if I'm a teacher in the, in the fifth grade, and we're taking our end-of-year MAP assessment, I want my kids to be aware that if they do well, financially it could impact and help the teacher because that's the growth measure, or one of them. And so, with that being said, you're going to hear a lot about the expansion of the teacher incentive allotment. You'll hear us talk more in the year and years to come about having good and better data than we have in the past that's going to help us measure where we are with every kid. So this, this is exciting to me because now we have, we have a place to begin.
I agree. The point I would make to that is this data, the charts here, and I took them straight from NWEA to show that this comes from their system. The report was run, though, from fall BOY to spring EOI. So while we gave MOI, it does not show that here because we wanted it to mirror the data we will submit for the teacher incentive allotment. Any questions before I move to RLA?
I was going to ask, so in terms of the teacher incentive allotment, how do our numbers look?
So we are still, we officially will know in October, but we're going through our data. We do expect multiple teachers to designate. You do have to have a minimum of 55% student growth, but that's one component. So please know those are averages by grade level. Some teachers were below or above those averages, but it has to be the student growth component and their T-test evaluation. So it's the two of those. We have preliminary data that we're working through, but we'll know officially later in the next school year because they will receive payment by August of 2026. Okay? Yes, ma'am. Great question. So the next slide, oops, I didn't advance. The next slide as seen there on your footer, this is for RLA. And again, color bands, everything is as we've discussed. I did not put a single bullet point for every one, but we'll just go through and kind of briefly tell you, third grade, 56%, fourth grade, 56%, fifth grade, 44%, sixth grade, 38%, seventh grade, 48%, and eighth grade, 53% falling in that blue, green, and yellow of exceeding or maintaining their growth. And just because I want to point out as well, for English I and English II, for those specific teacher incentive allotment grades, which I do need to clarify, this is only the reading component. And so, English I and English II's writing component that we see on the state assessment is not included here, but English I, 57%, and English II, 64% of students exceeding or maintaining that growth measure. So to kind of recap, and then I'll take some questions, did I stop?
Dr. Gomez, would you go back to that?
I sure will.
That reading slide for, there you go. Yeah, I just, I just writing down some stuff real quick, hold on, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I was not trying to go too quickly. So some highlights for the 23-24 versus the 24-25 school year. As Dr. Moran clarified, this is the first full year where we can take comparisons from fall to spring with every eligible student. We treated it like a secure test, like we do state assessments. Yes, you still have some students who were absent, but it was the goal to have every student test within the windows. You might have questions from stakeholders, parents, staff, why we have windows. It's important to note, because it is nationally-norm referenced, there's windows of time, so they have these baselines to compare third graders across the nation, fourth graders across the nation. So we work within the windows that NWEA gives us so that we can be in line with that test window. So in RLA specifically, we did have six grade levels that increased the number of students exceeding or maintaining their growth, specifically fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth. And then in math, we had four grade levels that maintained or increased the number of students exceeding or maintaining their growth. Fifth, sixth, eighth, and Algebra I. Student growth is a very important mindset that every educator can get behind. I won't go into individual educators' feelings about state assessment and things that they don't like, but taking a student from where they are to being committed to growing them a year, educators will stand behind that. And that's why we put so much into MAP as an assessment that helps us make instructional decisions.
Fair, I want to comment on that. You're exactly right. The STAR test is a state assessment, and in the past, the big conflict was, I'm just going to use math, that an honors teacher that teaches the honors kid was compared possibly to a teacher that was, you know, had regular or on grade level. And there was some, you know, discrepancy about that, which we thought that was a fair discrepancy, that you necessarily couldn't, could not compare a teacher that teaches grade level to a teacher that teaches honors. So when the state came to this, a teacher allotment with growth, every child should and can grow, so every teacher is on equal playing field. And then, from what I understand, the other part of that is the T-test. And I know that the administrators that are giving the T-test have gone through extensive training hours. They're not just walking into a classroom. There is so much on that assessment for a teacher, and they know what it is, so they can prepare, they can work through it. It's something that some teachers are driven by, you know? Most people are driven with more income, but that's not, you know, why they do it. But I'm glad to see that the teachers that are knowing their kids deeply, and when you look at growth, that is what you're looking at, you celebrate. And when, the beginning, when you were talking about, you know, a child may grow but not be on grade level, but, and then no child left behind, and all that is all like coming together, I feel like now, in a, in a very positive way, because our lap, our last MAPS test was the week after STAR, right? Well, you know, we have kids that scored mastery on STAR, that's missing three questions. And the next year, maybe they missed four and they weren't mastery, and they felt like, you know, they failed, but they didn't. And this growth is where I'm hearing more children say, you know, I grew so many points. And just so people hearing the test, if I'm understanding this right, it keeps getting harder and harder and harder. And it's opening up conversations, like, you know, on my MAPS test today, there was this question, I've never heard of it, and they talk about it, and that's learning in itself. So the fact that children can go to school and no matter where they are, we don't, you know, there are gaps, or where they're coming from, or what their history is, they're able to see success. And when any human sees success... And when any human sees success, you get a taste of that, you want more of that and more of that. So the MAPS test, and it takes a lot of time, and it takes time out of the school day, but I do think done correctly and with the driving and the data and the teachers looking at it and knowing their kids so deep, there's nothing as important as that for the teacher and the child. And that is where we're going to see kids love to learn because they feel that, you know, I'm not as smart as them. It's not about them, it's about, oh, I grew. And that's where we see the smiles and the excitement. So I'm excited about this. I'm excited about the data, and I think that we're going to continue to see. And one more thing, I want to give a shout out to the teachers because it takes time to have those conversations also with the child. They're just not handing them something saying, oh, you grew. They're talking about how much they grew. And sometimes for that struggling child, a point is all they need to hear to say, you know what, I'm getting better. So I just wanted to kind of see the broad picture of how it affects everybody and a parent also. So thank you, Farah.
And Farah, what do we have for the kids that are, students that are underperforming and low growth? Like, can you, like, just give a preview of what programs we got for them right now?
There's a number of things. So if you want to talk, again, remember there's, just because they're underperforming and low growth doesn't mean they're a striving student, or it could mean that they're a striving student, but it could be a very advanced learner that's not being challenged. And so that's very difficult for a teacher, especially, I'm just going to use a secondary example, if I have twenty-four students in my classroom, to differentiate for every student in there. They're going to teach to the grade level for sure, but that high achiever that's low growth, low performing, needs to be challenged. So if you want to talk programs specifically for secondary, y'all heard us talk about IXL this year. I know Ms. Duncan has had multiple conversations with me about that. IXL doesn't stop either. And so it also explains, which is very hard to find in secondary math, the misunderstanding and the misconception. That's just one example. But it depends on the individual student and why they fall in that band. Because remember, data is simply data. You have to ask reflective questions once you have that data. The why, what variables are impacting this? Has there been a change at home? Just a number of questions. But just in general, Mr. Galios, that's one example specific to secondary.
Because I was just wondering what we could do to lower that number.
Sure.
You know, because there was quite a bit of red in there, so. I think you're going to see that number decrease as time goes on, yeah. And, you know, when you talk about tier one, two, and three students, we have interventionists that do great work in small groups. We have teachers inside the classroom with tier-two students that are keeping them in the classroom, but in small group instruction, working with them. It's amazing. When I go to the campuses and see the boards with, they've got the kids' names there, they know exactly where they're at, and every time there's a benchmark, they're moving those and having conversations with the kids. And Pam's right, the kids know where they're at. This is going to change the complexion of the district academically. I wish it could happen overnight. But as I told Dr. Kingman, we've just gotten through a full year of beginning, and now I feel like we can start the race now. We've got data, and, you know, we're implementing this curriculum through, middle school's going to get their math this year.
Correct.
And there's going to be some middle school kids that are going to struggle this year, and that's good. They need to struggle. I want my kid to struggle and earn it and wrestle with it and learn and learn how to fail and get up and go again. So we want it to be tough, and it's going to take some time to become part of our culture, but it will work. We just have to stay the course.
We refer to that struggle as the productive struggle. You have to learn how to fail forward and grow from it. And so parents, educators, teachers need to know the productive struggle is good for students.
And like Ms. Duncan said, because that's what I'm just wondering, is these kids that are low growth, low performing, whatever you have on there, whatever they're called, or whatever they have them on there. I know they're not. I know that. And I'm just wondering, you know, like you said, y'all gave me some good examples there of, you know, they know where they're at, and as long as they're being challenged, I think they'll get to where they need to get. And like you said, we'll bring that number down, so.
Well, the challenging part is what's interesting because we challenge them. Not every child wants to be challenged because challenge is hard.
Yep.
It is hard. And, you know, we're pushing this through middle school, and as a middle school teacher, I used to, was very adamant about struggling and failure and consequences. Middle school's where it needs to happen. Let them fail, let them struggle. They don't turn in their work. Let them earn that zero. That's where the life lessons are learned so that when they get to high school and they're working on that transcript, they've had that experience. And the parents, you know, and I was one of those that, you know, get upset because they didn't make an A, they didn't make a B. I used to, laughingly, and we had good conversations, tell my parents, no college ask for your middle school transcript. So let all of these struggles, let all of the tears happen here. Teach them to be fighters, teach them to problem solve, to think deeply. Then when they go to high school, they have those tools. So that, so you're exactly right, that this age right here, it's hard. There's a lot happening right here, but we have to support them and let them know it's okay. It's okay to struggle. It's okay to be teary-eyed when you get something wrong, but we're going to be there and we're going to support them. And then when they, when they go through that hard time and they see that, celebrate. We celebrate big.
So in closing, I don't have a separate slide, but in upcoming months, we will be talking about state assessment for our families. It's just important a reminder for all of you, our families received notification, it went out from our communications department, on how to access those test results. So end-of-course exams became available to parents June 10th for grades three through eight. Parents will be able to access their students' information effective tomorrow, and we've sent that out. As we disaggregate that data, and we'll be providing updates to all of you in upcoming board meetings. So that was this evening's academic report for academics.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. And I know that this has been a years' process of trying to get us where we identify the need for growth and where we are as a district. So I just want, you and your team, I just want to thank you for the work y'all are doing to further us and look forward to the, obviously, improvements over the years. Thank you.
Absolutely. That shout out goes out to the teachers. They have the hardest job, so we always want to lift them up. I'm just going to kind of stand here because I think-
Yeah, I think you and Dr. Brenner are doing this next one together. Head Start update.
Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees, couple of quick updates, Head Start and Power School Student Information System. On Head Start, we're in the process of completing a new lease agreement as the COG is going to start using San Jacinto instead of the Rio Vista Elementary Campus. Currently working on HVAC units replacement, actually moving a couple from Rio Vista that were newer units, utilizing those and moving them to San Jacinto Campus. Conversations regarding utilities as Building A comes offline. All the different utilities that will be up and down, you know, on and off as we go through that so that COG is aware of that timeline. Removal and addition of technology as some of our technology comes out, theirs goes in, points of access, different security questions, and then cafeteria equipment. We have some that we need to move to another campus, and they have some newer equipment that they've purchased and had at Rio Vista that they'll be moving to the campus. So all of that is moving forward and streamlined. Dr. Gomez had conversations today with COG about registration, so.
Yeah, so we'll talk the instructional side. We have to have the facilities to get them in there, and our overall goal is to provide the best experiences we can for our youngest learners. So the district just posted four positions for early childhood. They're part-time. So the district will assume responsibility for the students from 1:45 to 3:15, and that's where you'll see the part-time early childhood teachers being added. So specifically, physical education, music, social development. I want to pause on social development because noneducators might say, what is an early childhood social development? So we've spent a lot of time talking about students being ready to come to school and ready to learn. That's the social development part. So I'll say structured play and real-life learning experiences will be a portion of that rotation. And then lastly, fine art. So from that 1:45 to 3:15 time period, approximately 154-year-olds would be with these part-time professionals and part-time paraprofessionals for the structured setting. Also, a component of this partnership is that Head Start staff are engaged in high-quality professional learning. So we're already partnering with COG. You know, the district puts on a very large summer professional development conference called Learning Palooza. So we already have eighteen of their staff members scheduled to attend with our pre-K teachers, providing dialogue and conversations on July 15th. So that's just kind of an instructional update, but yes, attendance. Sometimes early parents think pre-K is optional, but once they enroll in that program officially, regular attendance applies. So we need them to be there with their teachers and then with our teachers at the end of the day.
And I'd like to just add a couple of reminders to the board. I know you know this, but I think it's important to reiterate, this all started with a conversation with West Texas Rehab, that they were not able to provide related services to the Head Start program. Remember, that is not run by us, it's run by the Council of Governments. But the COG was leasing both DAY and Rio Vista. And the more that we started having conversations, the more we realized, number one, they've got more than 400 kids that are pre-K that we don't have our hands on. So they're missing out on the opportunity to get a Head Start, going into kindergarten with our staff, our curriculum, and our support. That was the first thing. Second thing is, West Texas Rehab couldn't, could not provide the services they needed for occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech pathology, that we need those kids to have early because we know there, we have a lot of kids that come to us in kindergarten not ready to go academically. So we see this as an opportunity to create a win-win-win with the COG, with West Texas Rehab, and with the district. These students will be enrolled in our district, and as opportunity allows us, we will be hiring those staff on our payroll in, that teach four-year-olds. If they're certified, then we receive the ADA for those kids. The three-year-old kids, I may have, yeah, the three-year-old kids are the ones that have to be certified. I'm sorry, I said it backwards. Four-year-olds don't have to have a certified teacher, but we, our goal is to get certified teachers in front of those kids, and we can begin collecting ADA on those students that are four-years-old this year. So financially, it's a benefit to the district. We're moving them to San Jacinto's outer buildings because they're much nicer and newer than Rio Vista. So we get their program in a better facility. We don't run the program, COG runs it. But now, West Texas Rehab will be able to provide those related services to those children. So we see this as a huge win for our district as a whole, our community as well. And over the next year or two, we're going to continue to bring those people in, and they will become our employees. They will go through our training, they'll implement our curriculum, and they will be our kids. And so I'm really excited about this. I think COG is as well. We continue almost every couple of weeks to have meetings with them and update as we go. So that's my two cents worth on what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that was my question, was on the curriculum and, you know, because like you said, we have these four-year-olds that are going to be going in kindergarten, and we've got to have them ready because before they work. And I think, and I was just wondering, how's that working with the whole Head Start deal? Because I know they had their own thing, and we couldn't implement ours before.
So they are very open. They do have a different curriculum in their four-year-old classes currently, but we've had discussions about the curriculum that the district uses, and we're starting those conversations. And their first step was sending their staff to join our pre-K teachers on July 15th.
Okay.
So I would say, Mr. Galios, knowing that you were here when we were the delegate, when the district was the delegate, there's a true difference in the openness and partnering alongside and understanding as we're sharing data and what we're seeing coming into our schools. So, and they will have all four-year-olds at San Jacinto, and they're expecting nine classes.
And just a reminder for people that are watching, it's not the main building. We'll be using the buildings on-
Correct.
Is it both sides or just one side?
Just the one side.
The one side?
Yes. Not the main building. The main building is not safe.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that because we use San Jacinto's entire facility. The Building A was not, was not the buildings that were completely redone in the 08 Bond. We're moving them to the buildings that were redone in the 08 Bond, which are significantly better than where we are at DAY and Rio Vista.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on what buildings we're talking about there. All right. Dr. Brenner, you going to give us a Power School update?
Just a quick update as we look to the shutdown. A lot of things hinge on that week and what we call rollover, both within the student information system. Just recently, we had admin training, so principals, directors, assistants, principals, and even our elementary secretaries that help with scheduling were all trained. After rollover and shutdown, we have several programs that were other third parties that now will be under the Power School umbrella, attendance intervention system, Naviance, school status, and an e-finance upgrade. All of those will be able to take place as soon as we go into rollover and move the data to the new Power School system. Also, at People, Purpose, Passion, we'll have training for staff as well, and then teacher and staff training will occur at the start of school. And then the communication department will be pushing out information along the way for registration dates and when parents can expect to be in the new system registering students.
I'm sorry, you told me the dates that we're hoping to make that switch is during the down week, or?
It is. So we'll, they'll do the PEMS information, Student Information System rollover, the week before the July 4 shutdown, and then technology is moving all of our server equipment, actually during the week when the district is shut down. So all, those two weeks are critical, and then that's when you want to flip the switch on July 7th and everything is rolling, so.
We look forward to the message on July 7th that it's all working.
We've got some great people on the teams, so we're excited to have that part of the process done and continue our training.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next is a public hearing on Every Student Succeeds Act. I think Dr. Gomez is going to help us with that this evening.
Ms. Taunton was ill, so I am filling in for Mrs. Taunton. So this is the district's public notice in accordance with the Every Student Succeeds Act, that San Angelo ISD is providing the public notice of our intent to apply for the ESA Consolidated Federal Grant application for the 25-26 school year. This application includes federal funding under several programs, including Title I, Part A. And I'm not going to read all of these to you, but you can see the purpose of the federal funding for Title I, Part A. The district's planning amount is listed there. This is a reduction from prior year's amounts, but it's, we were pleased that it was not a greater reduction. So we are very happy that it landed where it did. So it says tentative plans because we're presenting this evening for feedback and any questions we might receive that would help us finalize those plans. But the plan under Title I, Part A, would help the district with staffing specific to instructional coaches. Our instructional coaches are housed here at the district level, as you all are aware, but they serve teachers out on all of our campuses. but they serve teachers out on all of our campuses, and that's what's key there. It also helps the district provide for every elementary school a STEM paraprofessional. When the district first began the move in the area of STEM multiple years ago, that STEM responsibility was falling to library paraprofessionals, and that was a great strain for them to do both STEM and library. Then, we've been talking about early childhood. This, these funds would help us with our pre-K aides that would assist in all of our SAISD pre-K classrooms. Then, professional learning, instructional materials, and equipment would be our plan for that. Title Two is another component of the federal funding. This helps us in so many areas. This is how the district can provide an extensive new, new teacher academy and how we do multiple days. So it's really focused around both our commitment and our SAISD learner profile and our educator profile. But all funding in this area, Title Two is for recruiting, preparing, and really retaining because the better you prepare your people, they're more likely to stay with you. Title Three is another component underneath, or under this grant application. So we talk a lot of acronyms in education, but when we talk special programs, English learners or EB students, this is the federal funding that helps us support that special subpopulation. This allows the district to provide paraprofessionals, also professionals. You'll hear the district talk about English support students, teachers, that's how we fund them. It also helps us with classroom resources, professional development, and technology. And then, lastly, underneath this application is Title Four. And in Title Four, tentative plans are in the area of professional development. STEM resources, you can provide STEM, but if you don't have updated resources, then that does you very little good. Safety and security, we are always committed to making our schools safer. We're able to use these funds to help in that area. Specifically, I'm going to use names. Y'all know Feck and Brandon Lagone. This is part of how we fund their salaries and how the district has digital innovation facilitators and then safety directors, split funded. So this is, this is one area where we saw the greatest reduction in the application. So again, we have tentative plans, but we will have to look at other funding sources specific to Title Four due to the planning amounts. So the purpose of this notice is simply that, to inform stakeholders and to invite any feedback around our planned use of these federal funds to support our academic initiatives, professional learning, and our overall services for every student in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez, and stepping up to do that for us this evening. Any questions from the board? All right. Next, Dr. Brandon's going to give us a quick update on graduation planning so that we can't be accused of not giving people early notice.
Heavy on the quick. All right, here we go. I think everybody's aware that the bond for the city passed, which means the CRC Roofing Coliseum will be out of commission for two years for us. We use it for a variety of activities, but maybe the most important is Lakeview's graduation. And so for the next two cycles, we will not be able to have activities, and by that, I mean beginning September. And so we're looking at two graduations for Lakeview. We've got the Janelle Center rented, and we're, our team's working on a plan to facilitate two graduation ceremonies on Saturday. So the logistics, we'll, we'll get to you on that, but just know that we're planning ahead, we're thinking ahead, we're communicating with Stock Show and Rodeo. And it looks like for the next two years, graduations for both high schools will be at the Janelle Center. When the Coliseum's done, they'll have eight, eight thousand seats. And that's the time when we, as a board, can make a decision on, what do you want to do? You know, if you go to eight thousand seats, that means central parents have more, more support at the graduation, more tickets per family. And maybe it depends on how much the rent is, I don't know. But we'll see, that's two years from now. So that's the plan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. I'm going to take some privilege. We're going to move to action item A because I see Chris and Scott sitting back there, and I appreciate them sitting back there through all our reports. So, Dr. Brandon, if you'll come up and, sorry to not give you a heads up, but we're going to move to their action item, which is, yeah, I can do, we'll go there too.
Okay. The district's depository contract must be renewed every two years in accordance with the Texas Education Code. At the end of the contract's first two-year term, Section forty-five point two oh five states that the school district and the district's depository bank may agree to extend a depository contract for up to three additional two-year terms. First Financial Bank and San Angelo ISD administration agree to extend this contract for the second two-year term. So this evening, Chris Evatt, President and CEO, and Scott Creasy, Vice President, are here. And as they come up, I want to say a couple of things. Our partnership with First Financial Bank goes back as far as September one, nineteen ninety-nine. So over a twenty-five-year relationship with First Financial, as far as handling our depository services day-to-day, their positive pay system, preventing fraud on our check and ACH transactions, our ACH direct deposit for employees, debt service payments timely. We just can't say enough how much we appreciate what they do for the district and in the community. So I know they want to say a couple of words, but we do appreciate that partnership.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Keeman, and Dr. Brandon, and members of the board for allowing us to take a couple of minutes to, to speak. Again, Chris Evatt, President and CEO of the bank, and I've got Scott Creasy, who's our Vice Pres, Vice President of Treasury Sales. Scott's actually the one that deals with Merle and his team on all the, the different products that he just mentioned, the positive pay, the ACH. You know, it's how you pay all your teachers and everything. So I mean, that's a big thing that I know your teachers want to make certain that those paychecks arrive. So again, as he mentioned, we actually went back and looked, I mean, the, the bank and the district have actually had a relationship since nineteen fifty-four. But the current account that we have open today was open in nineteen ninety-nine. So over a twenty-five-year history, we really appreciate the, the relationship. It's a great partnership, and we hope that we can continue. And again, this is just our second of our three different two-year term extensions. And so look forward to these next two years, and hopefully, we can get another extension on, on the back end of it. So we just really appreciate the relationship with the school district.
Anyone have any questions for, is there either Mr. Creasy and, or Merle, or Dr. Brandon?
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Do you have a motion to approve the contract extension for the, with First Financial Bank from September one, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven?
I'll make a motion to approve a depository contract to First Financial Bank as a second two-year extension for the period September first, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
So a motion for Mr. Gallegos to have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Dindel. Any further board questions or comments?
I have a comment. Mr. Creasy, your precious mom was the lunch, I don't really know what she was at Bowie, right?
Yes.
And she opened a mini of lunch bags for my daughters. She was a precious, precious lady. I don't know what she's doing now, but tell, please tell her that my girl still talk about Ms. Creasy at Bowie.
I will do that.
All right. No other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All again, say the same. Motion passes five zero. I'm also going to, sorry, so I'm going to move one more person. Sorry if you're not that person, but I'm going to move item F. Lost my page. Item F, and we're going to consider the HVAC thermostat upgrade Tucker Building at Central High School. Thank, oh, another non-heads-up. Sorry, Dr. Brandon, but you're, if you could, we'll do that one real quick as well.
As part of the district's ongoing energy management and facilities improvement efforts, the Tucker Building at Central High School has been identified for HVAC control upgrades. This project aligns with the district's strategic goals for sustainability, modernization of aging systems, and reduction of utility costs. The Pelican system will provide remote access capabilities, allowing facility and maintenance staff to monitor, schedule, and adjust HVAC settings in real time. Vendor selection was based on cost qualifications, expected timeline, warranty, and compliance with project specifications. We did put this out, and then E three was the only bid that was returned. So it is our administration's recommendation that E three be awarded, the HVAC control upgrade at Central Tucker, the amount of ninety-five thousand per buy board approved contractor. We would, we do want to recognize Lance Wyatt and Cliff Weaver that are here this evening. They've got, E three has a great relationship with the district in HVAC and LED lighting projects and a trusted source from Tasby. So we present that to you this evening.
Any questions or comments regarding item F?
It says it's been identified, so is this the work that Tony and them do that, that they took over? What was it called that we had before that?
This is part of the revitalization, planned revitalization plan for that building. Oh, but yes, part of synergistic.
Yeah, well.
Well, I mean, not this isn't part of synergistic.
It's longer synergistic, but it's, this is the work that Tony and, not Tony, but those other people do that came over.
Right. We've been, we've been working through the project. We've had some, we have some older control issues that we either have to wait on parts that aren't in production and, or wait to have them serviced because it's not just everyone can walk through the door and work on that system. And so we've had units that are down for weeks at a time, and so this will help where our staff has better control of the system and are capable of going in on any given day to troubleshoot and repair. And so that's, that's our goal, is for that to be online more often and more efficient for the total system, so.
Thank you.
Any other board questions or comments regarding the thermostats at Tucker? Do I have a motion to approve?
Dr. Keeman moved to approve E three and award the HVAC control upgrade at Central Tucker in the amount of ninety-five thousand per the board book approved contractor proposal.
So a motion from Mr. Dindel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Ms. Mizell Flint. Any other board comments or question?
Dr. Keeman, I know we have some representatives here. I don't know if they want to say anything other than thank you. Anyway, we appreciate your work. I know we've done some projects with you guys in the past. It's been, it's been very efficient and effective, the work that you've done before, so we appreciate that effort that you've afforded the district before at this point. So look forward to some more work.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All again, say the same. Motion passes five zero. All right. Now, we're going to go back. Dr. Brandon, I won't make you stand up without notifying you. We're going to go back to item seven, which is our consent items. We have consent items A through F, which is our minutes from our May twelfth pre-agenda meeting, our meds from our May nineteenth regular board meeting. It's our quarterly investment report, our direct delivery RFP twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-six dash sixteen, direct, because they're grease trap, RFP twenty-six dash fifteen, pizza, which is RFP twenty-six dash four, and then consider delegates and alternate delegates at our Tasby convention. All of this was discussed about and presented last week. Any further board comments or questions regarding consent items A through F? Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
I make a motion to approve items A through F.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion from Mrs. Duncan, and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. Any further board comments or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye. All again, say the same. Motion passes five zero. All right, so now, back to my roundabout. We're going to go to item B, which is consider order authorizing issuance of unlimited taxable building bonds, Series twenty twenty-five. And Dr. Brandon's going to help us with that.
We're going to take just a few minutes and go through a few of the slides that Jeff Robert, our financial advisor with Hilltop Securities, presented last Monday night. He couldn't be here tonight. He's at another board meeting, making a similar type presentation over a bond issue. So next steps in passage of the Series twenty twenty-five bond is a parameter order where the board approves the parameters that are set for the board before the sale of the bonds. We talked about that in the legislation recently, that for November, there is a, will be on the bout the homestead exemption increase from one hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. We feel confident that that will pass. Homeowners will appreciate that. That increase actually reduces San Angelo ISD's taxable value by projected seven hundred million. What that does, though, is that it gives the district an opportunity that the INS that would have been collected by that seven hundred million to be held harmless from the state of Texas. And therefore, the bond issues, the projected INS hold harmless funding percent for the forty thousand increase is approximately ten percent. And so on the issuance of the three hundred and ninety-seven million dollar bonds, savings of eighty million could be realized by the district by doing that before September one. So the issuance of the bonds, the sale of the bonds, first payment, and then that being held harmless would realize for our taxpayers and the district a savings of eighty million over the life of the bond issuance. Bonds sold after September one will not carry that same, that same hold harmless. We see here just a chart, over the twenty years, we've realized savings. Over that time, the dip in twenty twenty-one has increased some over the last couple of years, so we see that settle in that five percent range, just between five and six. We see, see here just a calculated rate over the life of the thirty-year term at a rate of four point nine percent, keeping the tax rate that was voiced, communicated to the public of point two seven two six for the bond in the three hundred and ninety-seven million. Here, you see the, the tax-based growth assumptions over the next, what is that, ten years, a one percent growth. We have seen that be higher, and we're seeing that being projected for this, for twenty twenty-six, an increase from six point nine to seven point five. So if we see higher property values over the next few years, then we'll see that that tax rate could be lower over time. But for right now, then we have the same tax rate that was communicated during the bond So as the board delegates final pricing authority to the pricing officers, which would be superintendent and/or deputy superintendent of finance, and then the board is establishing the parameters, a maximum interest rate, maximum issuance, final maturity date, and the expiration of delegated authority. So for those parameters, we find the officers, superintendent or CFO, a not to exceed three hundred and ninety-seven million for the bond, a true interest cost not to exceed five point seven five percent. We certainly want to see it come in under that, but that would be the maximum rate and a final maturity date of thirty years, February of twenty fifty-five. And this was just a preliminary schedule that he had worked, worked up, Mr. Roberts, where you see the negotiated pricing in the mid, early to mid-July, so that we can make the first payment in August and be in front of the September one date for the state hold So for the administrative- the September 1 date for the state hold harmless. So for the administrators, administration's recommendation, we recommend a motion to adopt the order authorizing the issuance of sale of San Angelo ISD Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2025 as presented.
Just a couple of things for folks who weren't here last week, just so we make sure that our public knows what's going on in transparency. We, at one point in time when we were looking at the bond and discussing it, we talked about doing it in multiple series for our bond. And, but with the way the state legislature went forward with this last session, the $80 million is the 80 million reasons why we're gonna do this all at once, and try and make sure that we issue this as early as possible, so that the state, the local taxpayer, the money's still getting, coming from somewhere, but that the local taxpayer and their homestead is not what's covering the entirety of this because of the hold harmless for this, from the state legislature, if we get this done by September 1. The other thing is, as far as this authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax building bonds, we've done this before, and we did it when we re-financed our previous bond. It allows, when we have two meetings a month, it allows for us to maximize the opportunity to get the lowest rate possible in that window. I think we ended up with, you know, a much lower rate when we, by using this back in 19, no, 20, it was right COVID, it's right in there somewhere. And when those rates dropped, we used the same mechanism. And then the third thing is, the rate on, four graphs back, where it shows that the rate's gonna stay at 27 cents over the next 30 years.
On the INS?
On, yes, on the INS. The reality is, as a board, we don't want to ever, we like to undersell and over-deliver. And we fully anticipate with property values and with growth in our community, being able to lower that rate over the next 30 years, just like the board has been able to do with the current bond. But the reality is, we don't want to go out there and say we're gonna do that if we don't have the data to prove we can yet. But that as a board, we will aggressively work to lower our rates as we move forward, as the financing allows us to do that. The other thing about setting this, and I think you said it, but we lock in that higher rate, or higher rate compared to 20 over the next nine to 10 years. But then after that, we can refinance without, on the, refinance it. And also, if we, if the rates drop significantly, we could actually refinance it earlier than that with a penalty if there was an ability to, if there was ability to do that. So just, I just wanted, there were a couple of those comments that we talked about last week. I just want to recap that as we move forward. Any other board comments or questions regarding that? I said, I said enough? Okay. So we, do I have a motion to approve?
Dr. Keeman moved to adopt the order. Moved to adopt the order authorizing the issuance and sale of San Angelo Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2025 as presented. And again, by doing this in an expeditious manner, could save the local taxpayer a significant amount of money over the length of this bond.
Second.
So I have a motion for Mr. Dindel, and a second for Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 5-0. Next is item C, which is consider Park Hill Architects for the district's 2025 bond projects, page 97. And I think, Dr. Brandon, you're up again.
As part of our bond construction process and architectural services, Park Hill has provided updated qualifications for the continued work of Bond 2025. The selection of a firm providing professional services is governed by the following statutory language from Section 2254.004. And you have what those qualifications are. So just as part of that process, we would renew the selection of Park Hill Architect based on demonstrated competence, competence and qualifications pursuant to Texas Government Code 2254.004 to provide architectural, engineering, design, and contract administration services for the district's 2025 bond projects, and further authorize the superintendent or his designee to finalize and execute a contract with selected architect for a fair and reasonable price. We have those updated qualifications, and those are the same as they have been as Park Hill has worked with us over the last two years in facility assessment and design on other projects. And so this evening is simply renewing those qualifications. It's, we would have the contract, negotiated contract in the July board meeting. So this evening, we're just recognizing the updated qualifications from Park Hill.
Any further comments for, and Dr. Brandon, we'll likely have multiple of these agreements over the next several months with other architecture firms or engineering firms, et cetera, as we move forward with this process?
We will. Just tonight, by selecting the different construction delivery methods, which is our next item, then we'll begin going through and seeing updated, goodness, I'm missing the word, qualifications, updated qualifications from our other engineers and architects for the other projects.
So, and Park Hill's been a great partner. So thank you for the, all the work that they've done on helping us getting, getting to where we are right now. So anyone have any questions or comments regarding the agreement with Park Hill?
Quick comment. Thank you for all the work y'all have done, Alan, and all your people. Y'all have kept us very well informed with the little drawings and all that. But yes, thank you very much, because I know it's, it can be, I'm sure it's tedious. So.
All right. Any, do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve the selection of Park Hill Architects based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications pursuant to Texas Government Code 2254.004 to provide architectural and engineering design and contract administration services for the district's 2025 bond projects, and further authorize the superintendent or his designee to finalize and execute a contract with the selected architect for a fair and reasonable price.
I have a motion from Mrs. Mizell Flint, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 5-0. Next is, as we alluded to, the bond construction and delivery methods, which, again, going with what we talked about with our Series A, and trying to get all of this done as expeditiously as possible, we have to start making decisions early on. So I think this is one of those early-on decisions. So.
Yes. With, with the passage of Proposition A, the district started conversations regarding bond construction timeline, projects list, and possible construction, construction delivery methods. Park Hill Architects, both at our pre-agenda and this evening, has offered what the different types of construction delivery methods are, and who might provide those services, both Park Hill, SKG, all the different, our local architects. And so you have that list. I don't know if we want to bring that list back up from Park Hill's presentation. And so here we have the, our projects list by project, by delivery method, and then by engineer and architect. And Park Hill has left some flexibility for the district as we're able to do pricing and availability of contractors and construction companies. And so that would be, we would present that to the Board of Trustees for consideration to approve the 2025 bond projects list as presented by Park Hill.
Any question, I mean, I know we've been, I know this has been in front of us the past couple of weeks, and even actually really the month before last, the month before this. Any questions regarding bond construction delivery methods and the packages that have been outlined? So this allows them, my understanding is this allows us to start working with engineers, architects, et cetera, to actually figure out how these projects are gonna be outlined so that we can get moving to get in the bid.
Yes, sir. We'll jump right into the design phase, working with administration, teachers, principals, on what those buildings are gonna look like with all, all of our different providers that are listed.
Any questions or comments regarding the method of construction delivery for the bond projects? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve administration's recommendation of a final list of bond construction projects and proposed delivery methods for each project to be approved as presented.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Dindel, and a, I mean, a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mr. Dindel. So I was writing the name down as I said, mine doesn't work well enough. Okay. So a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any further board comments or questions?
Alan, if you could, I guess, you had a slide of the timeline of when we're gonna, I mean, you don't need to bring it up, but could you send that to us, or send it to Merle?
We'll make sure it's in private access.
Okay. Thank you.
Further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have our bills, accounts, and financial statements from our, from May of 2025. We have any questions or comments regarding the bills, accounts, and financial statements from May of 2025? Do I have a motion to approve the bills, accounts, and financial statements from May of 2025?
Dr. Keeman moved to approve the bills, accounts, and financial statements for May of 2025.
Do I have a second? I have a motion from Mr. Dindel, and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any further board comments or questions?
Dr. Keeman, as you mentioned earlier, we saw a lot of these reports last week, and with all the bills, accounts, and, and statements for May of 25, 25, we reviewed last, last week, in their entirety. All these, all these reports can also be found online in an effort at financial transparency. Under a tab, ssd.org, go to district, and there's a tab called Financial Transparency that you can view all these reports.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve? I did. Dindel and Duncan. Do I have, sorry, that was the next one. All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 5-0. Announcements, we have a finance and pre-agenda workshop on July 14. We have a regular board meeting on July 21. And with that, no other comments or questions, we are adjourned.